We get seconded on all birthdays. Could you send me one? I love to know that. I could be seconds for everything, too, Jared.
I did.
This is ten dollars. He called us at seven. Do you think you did it on the agenda? On the departments? So you always go first?
Uh, that's usually how I do it.
What do you want to go first?
Okay. Once I, well, I run back across the screen.
Is that what you want to do? You want to go first?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Um, I had them say it to them. I just, I wasn't sure how long.
On my jet.
Oh, yeah. Are you reading everything off there?
No, no, no. But like, I'll.
Oh, yeah.
Long time to sleep.
Oh, am I going to screw me tonight? I'm going to screw me tonight.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Oh, damn. Everything okay?
Good.
You look good. Today's your birthday. How old are you? It's about this thing, but I feel we cut the grass. I'm up here. I'm covered all week. I feel pretty done. I can go to, I can go to Cleveland to see if they can take this.
Oh, I hope you're tuned in.
I think I'll clean the planet. They couldn't do anything in the morning. So they should be. They should be.
You wanted it away.
We can move it. Okay, good. You don't really have to. What things can turn? One second was here. It was probably. I almost said, just lying. I'm so much lying. I didn't know what to expect. That is. I don't know. It seems like it's interesting. Uh, I, um, show. Callously. It all looks the same. Okay, yeah, please do. If you rate us on it, send it to me. I'd love to tell it.
Hi, Mayor. I was going to get down and pray, but I can't get back up quite good.
I'm talking to you right now, too. Rich, that we're having a screw. We're super screwed. Jared, ready?
Yeah, whenever you go. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the Uniontown City Regular City Council meeting of June 6th, 2024 at 5:00 p.m. Roll call.
Councilman Billy?
Here.
Councilman Thomas?
Here.
Councilwoman Winfrey? Councilwoman Brown?
Here.
The mayor?
Here. All rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the law of the Constitution and to the mission of our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Usually, at this time, I'm pretty short-winded, but this evening it seems like I've got a lot of things to say, so I think that's, that's a good, that's a good point, because there's a lot of good things going on in our city, and I'll try to highlight a few of them. Number one, our next council meeting is always, our council meeting is always the first Thursday of every month, but the first Thursday of July falls on July 4th, so we're going to change the next council meeting to July 10th, which is a Wednesday, and usually we're on a Thursday, but it will be at 5:00. And thank, thank you for understanding that. I'm sure everyone's noticed that the railroad tracks on Beeson Boulevard are being removed. This is the beginning of the next step of the building of the Sheepskin Trail through the city. Special thank you to John Pawlinski and his crew for their hard and diligent work on this project. Thanks, John. We're real proud of that, and we've given a lot of good comments about us. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Farmer's Market at Bailey Park is entering into its third week. It's really been well attended. Please take time on Saturday between 9:00 and 12:00 to stop by. You won't be disappointed. Thanks to the Parks and Rec Board for doing, for job well done with the market. Nice to see the flags along the city for Flag Day, Memorial Day, Fourth of July. This year, our local Elks Club spearheaded putting the flags up. Want to thank the Elks Club and especially Keith Helling for doing this for our community. Our annual 5K race will take place on Saturday, June 29th with a start time of 9:00 p.m. This coincides with the Father's Day at Marshall Park being organized by the Herald Standard Newspaper, and the funds that they raised goes toward the renovation of Marshall Park, which they've been doing that for the last three years or so. Information about the race will be posted on the city's Facebook page. Looking forward to a good turnout on June 29th. The Parks and Rec Board usually meets on Sunday night, third Sunday of every month at 5:00, but this, this month, the third Sunday falls on Father's Day, so we're going to cancel that meeting, and the next meeting will take place on Sunday, July 21st, 5:00 p.m. here at City Hall. And I thought, on a very sad note, former councilman, city clerk, and a very good friend of the city and a dear friend of mine, Mr. Philip Michael passed away this morning. Please keep the Michael family in your prayers. Could we have a moment of silence for Phil and his family? Thank you. That's about all I have. Do we have any comments on agenda items only? If not, that's all I have, Mr. Williams.
All right. We'll go ahead into the regular agenda. Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to receive the report of the treasure for the month of May, 2nd, 2024, being the same as hereby received and filed. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to accept the minutes of the May 2nd, 2024 Regular City Council Meeting, being the same as hereby accepted and filed. Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, Council hereby directs the Director of Accounts and Finance to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the City of Union Town. May 2024 invoices: General Fund, $229,088.54; Sewer Fund, $147,634.21; Recreation, $5,060.57; Recycling, $2,309.93; Highway, $3,474.95; Off-Street, $2,107.80; and Library, $1,450.41. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize a city-sponsored firecracker 5K run walk in the City of Union Town on city streets on June 29th, 2024. Event in registration will begin at Bailey Park at 9:00 a.m. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve overhead banner request for City of Union Town Firecracker 5K Race Walk to be placed at Fayette Street. Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the purchase of 150 t-shirts from Union Town Printing Press in the amount of $900 for the City of Union Town Firecracker 5K Race Walk. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
No.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the city clerk to advertise to bid out the fire department's International Pierce Engine Number One to be sold as is, with the city reserving the right to accept or reject any and all bids. Uh, Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the purchase of a 1990 Grooman fire engine from Ohio Powell Stewart Volunteer Fire Company for a cost of up to $10,000. Uh, Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the purchase of front steering tires for the fire department ladder truck, as well as replacement of the font tire, front tire rods, slack adjusters, and repair the truck's exhaust as required by Pennsylvania State to pass inspection. Such authorization would include approval for vehicle inspection for total cost of all repairs not to exceed $3,900. Uh, Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town that Alex Robbani, I apologize for mentioning that name, is hereby appointed as a full-time police officer after successfully completing a six-month probationary period. Such position shall take effect June 10th, 2024 at the starting rate of $25.74 per hour. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town that Jace Hempi, or Hampi is hereby appointed as a full-time police officer after successfully completing a six-month probationary period. Such position shall take effect June 10th, 2024 at the starting rate of $25.74 an hour. Uh, Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to introduce Bill Number 1,778, Proposed Ordinance Number 1,758, A Vacant and Abandoned Real Property Registration Ordinance, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Union Town, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, Requiring the Registration of Abandoned Real Property and Vacant Buildings and Structures with the Notarized Registration and the Payment of Registration Fees, Setting forth Definitions Providing for the Applicability of the Ordinance Providing for the Designation of Local Agents Providing for the Posting of Such Property Implementing a Duty to Amend the Registration Establishing the Fees for Registration and Applicable Waivers Therefrom Providing Procedures for Appeals Providing that Delinquent Registration Fees Shall Be Lean on Such Property Providing for Annual and Compliance Inspections Setting forth Provisions Regarding Rights of Entry into Such Property and Regarding Search Warrants and Notices Providing Provisions for Special Requested Inspections and Notices Providing for Administration Enforcement of the Ordinance Setting forth Violations and Penalties Providing for Compliance with Other Codes Declaring that the Provisions of this Ordinance are non-exclusive Providing for the Repeal of Inconsistent Ordances and Providing for an Effective Date for the Ordinance. This is just an introduction, so this would then be published for additional comments and adopted at subsequent meeting. Uh, Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve to hire Stephen Price for full-time position in the Department of Public Works at a salary of $17.44 per hour effective June 17th, 2024. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve to hire David Ray for full-time position in the Department of Public Works at a salary of $17.44 per hour effective June 17th, 2024. Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve to hire Travis King for full-time position in the Department of Public Works at a salary of $17.44 per hour effective June 17th, 2024. Uh, Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to introduce Bill Number 1,779, Proposed Ordinance Number 1,759, An Ordinance of the City of Union Town, Fayette County, Pennsylvania, Providing for the Collection, Transportation, Removal, and Disposal of Garbage and Refuse, Establishing Rules and Regulations Limiting Collection of Containerized Garbage and Refuse, Prohibiting the Accumulation of Garbage and Refuse, Require Payment for Refuse and Garbage Service, Providing Penalties for Violations, Repealing All Inconsistent Ordances, and Providing an Effective Date. And this would be an ordinance that just actually memorializes and pulls all of your current ordinances into one consistent ordinance, so. Councilman Billy?
So before I take the vote tonight on, on this particular issue, uh, we have recently just met with, uh, our hauling agent, um, and in that meeting, it was expressed that there is $600,000 of unpaid sanitation bills. This is a direct reason of what, why this contract, uh, had gone up to the level it did, uh, per household. And we were all provided a list of names of all the people in the city that have not paid. And I have, just have to say that it is, it's, um, very concerning to me, uh, that the individuals would let these bills go for so long. I mean, we have bills upwards of $6,000, and if you do, if you do the breakdown on it, it's a lot of money. So just have to say that, you know, um, for everyone that does pay the garbage bills, thank you. That is a yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Just to expand on Councilman Billy's comments, 45%, um, let me backtrack here a minute. When we first signed the contract with County Hauling, they had told us that 32% of the city's garbage customers were delinquent. At this meeting a few weeks ago, they've informed us that it's, now it is 45% of the residents here are delinquent in their accounts. So of course I vote yes on that.
And again, that is just the first reading introduction, so that will be, uh, published for the, with the legal notices and available for public comments and adoption at a subsequent meeting. Uh, be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve K-2 engineering to perform a request for proposals for repair of traffic light at the intersection of Beeson and Penn Street. Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to fill the vacant seat of Mallard George of the Planning Commission Board with Pastor McReed with term to expire on January 1st, 2025. Uh, Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to fill the vacant seat of Jerome Venek of the Planning Commission Board with Leroy Townsend with term to expire January 1st, 2026. Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to reappoint Paul Palya to the Planning Commission Board with term to expire January 1st, 2028. Uh, Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to reappoint John McKeon to the Planning Commission Board with term to expire January 1st, 2027. Uh, Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve additional costs of $1,396.50 for Grant Street Summer League Basketball t-shirts from Union Town Printing Press. Additional cost is due to an additional 261 registered players than originally quoted, uh, which was, was 300 players. Uh, Councilman Billy?
So I'm noticing that the two different invoices, we have $6 for the shirts for the firecracker, and then these shirts are quoted at $7.50. I'm just, I'm curious. First of all, my, my, my vote will be no, but I'm just curious of why the difference from one event to another. And also, if I can add on the passing of the shirts for the firecracker 5K, um, even though I was not in support of that, I, I would like to urge that these, the new t-shirts that are printed, uh, do not print with a year or date on them. That way, if there's any extras, we're not just giving them away, and we're not just sitting in stores that we're actually able to utilize them for the following year. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Thomas?
No.
And Councilwoman Brown?
No.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, but we need to open the bids first, so we'll do that. We, this is for the Story Square awning repairs. There were two bids that were received. This one. This is a bid from RPM Signs and Lighting of Smaug, PA. Um, this would be for the replacement. The total amount bid is $165,450.
Can we report A and part B of that bid? If so, we need to look those separately?
I'm not seeing. I'm not, I'm not seeing a division between part A and part B.
Maybe just not to. As opposed to painting and canvas?
I will let you take a look at this, see if you can, see if there's a distinction between those while I open the other one. If you mind. And the second bid is Country Canvas Awnings of Washington, PA. And this is for the Recover the Existing Structure. Uh, this would include survey prep, strip, current frame inspection, staple and new fabric finished with zip strip, awning fabrication installation. Uh, that would be a total amount of $37,505 on that one. And then, let me see if there's an alternative in here as well.
There is an alternative there. Reduce a bid to maybe $153,950, but there's still quite a distance.
Okay, I don't see any other alternative bid in this one.
Should it be one?
Okay, okay. And this, you said there was an alternative one?
The, the last gray area of the $11,500 of painting was optional and should actually be deducted from total. So the active total of that bitch to compare that was to apples would be $153,950.
Subtracting the $11,500.
Correct.
Okay. So that would be the, two bids that were received, the one would be for the $165,450 minus the $11,500 if there was no, um, spot scraping, priming, and then the other one is for the 30. $37,505. Is this a time-sensitive one that has to be done immediately, or is this something that can be evaluated and then voted on next month?
Totally. And we're trying to organize it to, uh, help with Story Square concert events. We were hoping to be able to get it done possibly during the week of July 4th because there's no event on July 4th, but of course it needs review to be reviewed. I don't know if they're playing a role or what. Can I see it, someone see the scope work on both of them?
That's the, that's the lower one, the $37,000.
Which is still, the special work is the same, that they're, saying they're going to do the same task. One is just extremely higher than the other, but the scope of work is the same. So, common sense would be go with.
This was subject to an RFP where it was standardized the, um, scope of work, so correct or responded to the same scope of work. Yeah.
What page, first page to the, the...
I don't understand. Third page?
The, the first page, well, the second one, that's the scope of work on that first page. And with page and ten minutes, keep it over.
Yes.
All right, so with that being the case, and the Country Canvas Awnings for the amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred and five being the apparent lowest bidder, is council okay with moving forward with that little, little bit?
Yes. Do we need to make a motion?
No, I'll, I'll just, I'll just agree to the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to award the bid of Story Square awning repair and replacement to Country Canvas Awnings, in the amount of $37,505. This repair is covered by City of Union Town's property insurance. Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke? Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve the extension request for the CDBG, CDBG code enforcement activity for fiscal year 2020. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve the City of Union Town's redevelopment authority to apply for 2023 CDBG contract in the amount of $311,565. Councilwoman Billy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, hereby requesting a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program GRTP grant in the amount of $250,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for Marshall Park renovations. Be further resolved that the applicant is hereby designate Thomas W. Gerke, Mayor and Shannon Wood, City Clerk, as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the City of Union Town and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining a request of grants. Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, whereas the City of Union Town will be undertaking a project, under a project, under the Strategic Management Planning Program of short and long-term financial and managerial objectives. Whereas the City of Union Town wishes to participate in such project, whereas the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development makes available grants and aid to such projects through the Strategic Management Planning Program. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City of Union Town of the County of Fayette hereby authorizes the City of Union Town to make application for such grant on our behalf. Uh, Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Yes, and I, I would just like to thank Mr. Newsom for traveling down to Union Town today to, uh, present the, the, have the presentation for the stamp program. Thank you.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve street closure and traffic service request forms for the Story Square Concert Series to be held on Thursdays from June to August 4th, 2024. Councilwoman Billy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve the use of the 911 law for Story Square Concert Series events being held on June 20th, July 18th, and August 15th. Uh, Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Uh, yes, and also if we, if we could make sure that we notify the emergency management building, 911 building. I know with a lot of, there may be, uh, some employees or people that are going in and out of that parking lot, so we could have that parking lot posted. So, yeah, thank you so much. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
And Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve sub- sub-recipient agreement with Calvary United Methodist Church to ensure compliance with DCD and the City of Union Town's requirements for CDBG activity contingent upon review of city solicitor. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve overhead banner requests from One Voice One Community for the Juneteenth event being held at Story Square. Councilwoman Billy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to approve the City of Union Town redevelopment authorities' citywide sign, sign standards proposal contingent upon solicitors' review. Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Also, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize K-2 engineering to place the Dunlap Sewer Project out for respective bidders. Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Billy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize K-2 engineering to perform a request for proposals for roof repair bid at City Hall. Councilwoman Billy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
If that is all, but we have more motions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Um, time for department reports. Ms. Simmons, Redevelopment Authority?
Good evening. So your agenda's in front of you. We had our CDBG status meeting on May 24th. The next meeting is on June 28th, recurring at 10:00 AM. The 2014 application to the CDBG program will hold its first hearing on June 13th. That will be at 67 Conneville Street at Venue 67. We will accept project requests. If there's anyone in the community that has ideas for projects, concerns of funding, ideas for really any development projects, stop in and see us. That will be at 6 o'clock. The, uh, quick glance review sheet has some updates. The Lemon Street Playground Project is complete and with your motion tonight, thank you, the signed standards will be approved and our signs will look uniform and consistent across the City of Union Town in terms of recreation entrance signs, amenity signs, and things of that nature. The demolition projects for 80 and 82 Lemon is a concern for the community. We are certainly working on that. We're doing our best we can to move along as quick as possible while remaining in compliance with the federal guidelines imposed by the funding that's, that's going to remove these structures. So the project has went through all the steps needed and now we are in the bidding stage. Contractors are just going to take a look at the properties and give us some quotes. We're going to have to open those at a, a public meeting and make the award to the contractor, and that's what we're working through right now. Same goes for the other demolition projects, 55 Lennox, 84 Murray, 39 Winona, and I believe 94 Murray. The code enforcement process is under review. We've had a couple great meetings with code enforcement. I call it our code enforcement A-team. Uh, the mayor's at those meetings along with uh, the code enforcement officer and, um, Jared, I think, is at the...
Chief DeWitt?
Or yeah, the, uh, Chief DeWitt's at the meetings. Um, we're all working closely with Terrence Price, the new code enforcement officer, and we've ironed out some, uh, great ways that we can utilize the grant funding to make, help with the cost of code enforcement around the city and also the other reviews of, of properties and things that we need to. Um, thank you for approving the sub-recipient agreement for Calvary United Methodist Playground. The redevelopment authority will accept that property as a donation and move forward with the required CDBG uh, regulations in order to accept the property. We're reaching out to the community to ask for sponsorship of park maintenance over the next few years. We've had a few that have committed to do that, so we should have full maintenance and insurance coverage for the next four years. So we, uh, we hope that goes smoothly. We are at the point where we're ready to bid that project and if all goes well later this year, we could start construction on the, the first phase of the project. That's a playground located on Clark Avenue in East End, uh, Community. We have the Grant Street ADA Restrooms and Pavilion Project is in bidding. We have the State Theater External Rehabilitation Project in bidding. And we have One Voice One Community Tutoring. We're in the process of developing an agreement that's going to come in front of council. You will need to review that agreement, which basically says to One Voice, these are your responsibilities under the program. You need to make sure that you follow these, these regulations. Um, and if you don't, that, that is you and we will recapture, and it won't be the responsibility of the city. So that's important that we have that agreement. We are working with K-2 engineering on, on all of those projects we just discussed bidding. Our sewage and transportation meeting, um, is to be determined. Uh, there's no CDBG project updates at that time, so I'm on standby to review the priority projects for sewage. The existing owner occupied housing program, the environmental review is complete. We're reviewing scoring criteria for those that have applied on the waitlist. So some folks are going to receive a home rehabilitation application and those will be the folks that scored, um, in the, in the, have the highest score for needed repairs and that are sensitive clients that would, would need services sooner. So, um, that's going to be about seven, seven or eight housing rehabs throughout the, the city. Fair funding still pending and the USDA 504 Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Loan Program, there's seven underway. Samantha Mayfield, Program Manager, is working on that in our office. We actually have two properties now under review for sale in Story Square. I just ran three times today to go back and forth. Um, Story Square Concert Series kicked off this afternoon and we will have that every Thursday from, um, setup is around four, 4:30. We kick off at five, band finishes at seven and we'll stay there till 8 o'clock. On third Thursdays, they'll be there a little bit longer till 9 o'clock and there'll be six or seven craft and, and different vendors, six or seven nonprofits. The street will be closed there. Little bit bigger of an event, but there'll still be a band. So we just want to thank all of our sponsors. You can see those, uh, schedule of events placed throughout City Hall. You can email our office to, to get that schedule of rates if you're interested in attending. And we are still looking for sponsors for that program. Unfortunately, there was some sponsor changes, so we are still looking for any community, the, anybody in the community that would want to sponsor the last few events. The Downtown Business District Partnership is going great. We have, uh, ideas for business welcoming and license review. I'm working with the city clerk now to iron out some, uh, new updates to the business application and inventorying those in the central business district that, that would need a business license. And we're reviewing, um, Keystone Community Designation versus Neighborhood Assistance as Possible Grant Funding. The comprehensive plan is, um, moving along. We have a request for qualifications for professional services and we did get approved to extend our local share account that's with the county. What that means for us is that we can develop a comprehensive plan and five-year strategic implementation plan that basically finalizes our already invested in comprehensive plan and gives us five years of implementation and really just a guide to, to take us the rest of the way these five years. It's going to marry up nicely with two other requests for qualifications, which is our BLIGHT remediation task force. And soon to be, hopefully if all goes well, the Strategic Management Planning Program, which all sets us up for the next five years. So all of those will work together and there'll be no duplication because they're going to be going right along beside each other. Landlord Registration Program, uh, compliance and management is under review and we're discussing enforcement. We just had a new code enforcement begin and we still need to iron out all the details. We also have an ordinance that needs finalized and we are reviewing the cost structure. We, we did receive feedback. We want to make sure this is affordable for landlords and also affordable for the redevelopment authority to administer the resources that we're trying to provide landlords. We want to be able to be a resource for them. So we hope that this all can work together nicely. So you'll see soon the final ordinance come through and the, the final cost for your license. Um, I touched on BLIGHT remediation plan. We put that RFQ out soon. We had a great meeting today, um, with the BLIGHT task force, which included Brenda with the Fayette County, um, Redevelopment Authority, uh, David Mulchen from Threshold, uh, old, uh, Matt Thomas, uh, previous code enforcement officer and Mallory McKeon. That's our BLIGHT task force and it is these entities that would move BLIGHT remediation forward. Besides that, our future grants is the Strategic Management Planning Program. Greenways Trails and Recreation Program was already submitted for Marshall Park, so fingers crossed that we hear something good. And we do have multimodal transportation funds July 31st, um, which we could maybe look at if I'm still alive by then. And any questions? All right. I have to go back over.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you.
Chief Quan, Fire Department?
Okay, good evening, everybody. Uh, first off, counsel, our heartfelt thanks, uh, for supporting everything that we threw at you this evening. Um, I know it was a lot, but it's definitely appreciated and we're going to make good with all of it. So, um, I'd like to start out as usual with a rundown of our, uh, monthly incidents. Uh, for the month of May, we had 10 fire-related incidents. These included two building fires, one vehicle fire, two brush fires, one trash fire, one outside equipment fire, and three smoke scares, but fortunately, no fire resulted. Twenty-four rescue-related incidents. Fifteen of these are motor vehicle collisions. Five of those had injuries. We had one vehicle collision resulting in entrapment. We had one vehicle versus pedestrian accident. Two lockout gained access for the EMS crews. Uh, three extrications of an ill or injured person from a building and one physical rescue. We had nine hazardous condition incidents and these included one gas leak, one toxic condition, three carbon monoxide incidents, three power lines down, and one arcing or short, short-circuited electrical equipment. Had 17 service-related incidents. These included nine persons in distress, three lockouts, three general public service assistance calls, uh, one assist the police, and one cover assignment for another fire company. We had 14 fire alarm activations, five severe weather incidents. Uh, the weather's been crazy lately and we've ran a couple this month as well. So, um, you know, battening down the hatches out there, things have gotten pretty ugly, so. Um, yeah, it's kind of been keeping us busy lately. And we had, uh, three public fire education and fire prevention details and as always, these include pre- incident planning, building familiarization as well. Um, so our outreach program is alive and well and we continue to do it on a regular basis. Um, as far as our training conducted or taken by personnel for the month, the department had 73 man-hours of training for the month of May. We have had a couple of candidates for their professional qualifications board, firefighter two certification. One of them got their results already and that's James Hammaker. He passed. I'd like to congratulate him. Um, and as the other results come in, um, we'll let you know and, um, I'm pretty sure they passed too. We got a good bunch of guys and they've, they've been working hard, so. But, uh, congratulations to Jim. He got his official results. to Jim. He got his official results. The apparatus and equipment updates, I know it's a big price tag, and again, I apologize. With the ladder truck, we're going to get that scheduled, get it fixed, get it repaired. One good thing, you know, they are replacing original parts, so we made it pretty far with them. So, you know, those parts are just shy of twenty years old. It's a big truck, sees a lot of duty, a lot of weight going up and down the street. So, you know, again, thank you for supporting that. Our next unit's going to be Engine Ford. It's going to be due for state vehicle inspection, and that's not due until August. Hopefully, we should have no issues with that. Just a couple of miscellaneous items. Our personnel will be participating in the founding of day events. We're going to do a fire truck show and tell there. We've done that for a couple of years now, and it's always really well-received. One thing I forgot to include on the report also, our personnel, I think it was two weeks ago, they did the prom promise mock rescue over at the high school, and from what I understand, it was very well-received. So, hopefully, that message got out, you know, to keep our young people safe. They said everything went real well. So, and again, we're always glad to go out and do things like that. And then lastly, 4:53 PM, you guys got a lot of time to get over there. Jackpot...
5:53.
Oh, okay. You've still got time. You've still got time. The early bird jackpot's $3,000 tonight, so get on over there. And that's all I got. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
No problem.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the police report. Chief DeWitt is unavailable this evening, so he gave me a report, and I'll read it at this time. During the month of May, the Union Town Police Department responded to 885 calls for service. A breakdown of some of those calls included two criminal homicides, thirteen vehicle accidents, seven assaults, nine frauds, twenty-six welfare checks, forty-five domestics, one assist fire call, twenty disorderly conducts, forty-seven traffic complaints, twenty-three emergency medical assist, twenty-six assist other police, twenty harassment, one shot fired, twenty-five alarms, twenty-six thefts, five public intoxications, twenty-four animal complaints, seventy-four suspicious persons, activities, vehicles, and three overdoses. Officers made a total of thirty-seven criminal arrests, including one for criminal homicide. Issued fourteen, excuse me, issued eighteen non-traffic citations and seventy-four traffic citations. Officers conducted vehicle and foot patrols of the city parks as well as Sheepskin Trail, presented by Delver J. DeWitt. Public Works, Mr. Podolinski?
First off, I'd just like to say thank you for the new hires. Look forward to getting some help, and I know all the crews look forward to the added personnel. Talking about our crews, I think, echo what the mayor said. We've been removing the railroad tracks, and I think we're moving at a good pace. We've got a lot done, and it seems like the downtown businesses haven't gotten too mad at us as we have street closures and been trying to work to get them open as we go through here. And we will be starting on the next section here Monday, and hopefully, we can have it reopened by midway through the week here, as long as the rain holds off. For sewage collections this month, they took in a total of $209,288.62, bringing this year-to-date collection to $1,064,105.42. There's been some new tap-ins. They pulled us off the rails, so that's why we weren't down there this week or last week. We've been trying to keep up with our normal duties, sewage backups, new taps, running the compost site and doing lawn collections. It's a never-ending job, and we try to do the best we can to take care of all the city's needs and anything that's asked of us. And that's all I really have. Oh, and then to touch on the Dunlap Street project, it's something that myself and K-2 have been working together, working to put together for the past six to eight months. We had a collapse over there on Dunlap Street on a main line, and we tried to rent equipment and completed it ourselves, and it turned into too large of a job for us to complete with our small crew. And I look forward to getting some prices on it and hopefully getting it repaired before something else happens and causes a major backup there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'd like to add something, though. I probably call John once, two, three times a week with, I think they're small items, but from the people calling, it's very important to them. And John and his crew's out there, and he takes care of the people, and he didn't speak on that, but the way he presents himself and presents the city, all I do is get compliments about John and his crew. And I just want to take this time to thank you, John, and your group. Keep up the good work in representing the city in the way you do. Thank you, sir. Code enforcement, Mr. Terrence Price.
Hi. I'm from the south, so we say hi. So, first of all, I'd just like to say good evening to everybody. First off, I want to thank mayor and city council for your trust and your confidence in me in this role. At first, I thought I was going to be a little nervous about it, but actually, as I continue to sit in the role and to do the things that you guys have asked me to do and holding me accountable to do, it's actually been very enjoyable, very busy, but it's been very productive. And also, before I go into a little bit more of the code enforcement, I just want to just thank mayor Gerke, Chief DeWitt, Trace, Johnny, Bobby Smith, who recently retired, and the guys at the street department and the sewage department. Had a phenomenal time with them, my five months working with those guys. And I echo what the mayor said about Johnny. Johnny was top-notch supervisor to work up under. He was always encouraging. I promise you, he didn't pay me to say these comments tonight, but he was very encouraging. Even when I decided to step into this role, he was encouraging and encouraged me to step into it, and so I appreciate you, Johnny, big time. It's been super busy, as I said before, but it's been productive. There's been some hands-on training along with some words of wisdom. I've just been encouraging everybody. If you know anything about code enforcement, it's non-stop. So, I've just been encouraging everybody as the calls continue to come in to give me grace. I'm only one person, but I will do everything in my will to respond to your calls, to get those needs resolved. Lately, the focus has been upon high grass and trash, and as I began to just ride out in the city, for those of you that don't know, the city does have a code enforcement vehicle, and Chief DeWitt had got some magnet signs that are on the Jeep Cherokee that says Union Town Code Enforcement. I'm noticing even more that more people are stepping up and taking care of their yards. It has nothing to do with me. It's just the presence of the code enforcement vehicle. So, I'm noticing as I, you know, go around one block and come back, I see somebody out with the weed eater trying to knock their grass down. The only thing I do not like about the job, I shouldn't say this, but it's just I don't like serving the citations. But, you know, it's a part of the job, and so I'm just asking everyone to keep your grass cut. If you see your grass getting up, you know, close to your knees, it's a pretty clear that you should, you know, you should take care of the maintenance of that and just keeping your trash together, keeping it canned and keeping it bagged, because if not, I will have to serve Sweep citations, and Sweep stands for Solid Waste Education and Enforcement Program. So, so far, total up to date, so far, I've served fifteen Sweep citations and posted nine sewage notices. But I am excited. I'm encouraged to see what this position will continue to look like as it continues to unfold as I, you know, walk in it. And again, I want to thank you all for your patience and understanding. And if there's anything that you see, feel free to reach out to the code enforcement phone. You just call City Hall, and it'll send you right to my phone. If I don't answer, one, I'm either tending to a resident or on the call with someone or, you know, writing up the reports from just the incidents that I'm seeing. But other than that, I'm enjoying it. I appreciate, again, your confidence and your trust in me. And, you know, there's an old poem by Maya Angelou, and I know I butchered a little bit, but the bottom of the poem says, it says, "When you know better, you do better." So, I just want to encourage the residents of the city of Union Town. I know sometimes Union Town gets a bad rap. People talk, say this and that about Union Town, but I've come to love Union Town. Union Town's a beautiful city with beautiful people, and I believe if we work together, we can get all of this done. It's not going to be an overnight process, but if we come together in a spirit of unity and do what we're asked to do, this will be a phenomenal place, and we'll see exponential growth in the city. So, again, thank you guys so much, and I look forward to continuing working with you all. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Terrence.
My pleasure.
At this time, public comment. Before we get started, I'm sure everyone has read the rules and regulations that we set forth or on the doors of the, of council chambers. Just conduct yourself in a gentlemanly-type fashion, and we request that you limit your comments to three minutes. So, at this time, we'll take public comment. Is there any public
My name is Kelly Traut, and I'm here as a city resident and a member of the Parks and Rec Board and the primary facilitator of the farmer's market. I want to thank all who have come out to support this wonderful event for our city that has been so well-received. I wish I had more than three minutes to discuss the positive impacts. I'd like to inform the public that although alcohol sales have occurred at the farmer's market since last year without issues and have greatly contributed to the overall success, alcohol sales have now ceased due to an oversight from our board that I take responsibility for. I want to thank council for making me aware of a new ordinance passed in the city in March 2024, ordinance number 1756, which prohibits the use, possession, or imbibing of alcohol in parks and public places in the city. However, the ordinance does provide for exceptions to be made if permitted by council. I want to bring awareness to others who are planning events in the city that have historically allowed alcohol sales in our consumption, such as the Italian Festival, Christmas in the Square, and others. And as this ordinance may or may not affect plans, I was made aware of the ordinance as I proceeded to add Laurel Highlands Brewery to the market because they meet the criteria per the farmer's market rules and we're seeking to apply for the same or similar state-issued farmer's market permit that our current wine vendor has, which allows for closed container sales. I've been seeking an immediate path forward to rectify the situation, and I requested that an item be added to the agenda at tonight's meeting for council to vote to grant the farmer's market an exception to the rule, but this item did not make the agenda this evening. I recognize this topic may hold a wide range of views and opinions, so I petition council to please add the exception to the agenda for next council meeting to allow for public discourse and a vote. My personal opinion on the best path forward is for council to grant an exception to alcohol sales at the farmer's market to resume, but also consider limiting the number of alcohol sellers to one per market, keeping the focus on the other products. Granting an exception not only supports the ongoing success and growth of the market, but keeps our market competitive with other local markets who largely allow alcohol sales and demonstrates that the city is easy to work with and open for business. I apologize to our farmer markets patrons, Herring Farm Wines, Laurel Highlands Brewery, and other alcohol vendors we've received inquiries from who have, who have to sit out until this is possibly rectified. Herring Farms has been instrumental in building the market, and their absence is akin to our mall losing one of our anchor stores, and the entire market will be impacted by their absence. Herring Farms also brings produce and currently accepts senior farmer market vouchers, and I'm assisting them in being able to accept SNAP, EBT, and WIC, helping to achieve the overall goal of the market, which is connecting the residents of our city to our local farmers, in turn strengthening the number-one industry in our county, agriculture, improving access to in-season, fresh local produce for our city residents, improving the health and wellness of our city residents, boosting our local economy, and strengthening the social fabric of our city. I'm happy to make myself available after the meeting to answer any questions anyone might have. Thank you for your time. And just an aside, many community members have reached out. We want to discuss this topic with council members and were not able to find council's contact information on the website, so I would ask that you make it available. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Reverend Crable?
My name is Bob Crable. I'm a resident of the city of Union Town. Mr. Mayor, I would commend you for being the only one that voted on Resolution 153, additional cost of leaked T-shirts. I noticed that maybe the rest of council failed to read the complete sentence. It says, "Due to additional 261 shirts needed, needed." And I'm appalled that this being such a small charge, one time a year, why we couldn't pass this to help our youth in this city where babies is killing babies. Thank you. And also, young lady, they say that some people drink three glasses of wine, and they're drunk, so when you drink one, you're one-third drunk.
Thank you, Reverend Crable.
I want to say something about, well, to my department was a comment about my department. As far as the T-shirts are concerned, if you recall, a couple of months ago, there was $2,300 that was given to the program. That was a couple of months ago. This, I was never made aware of this additional cost. I was told that there were 400 children that signed up for the basketball program, and now I'm being told today, just now, that 200 more. When I saw the schedule, I do not see 700, 600 to 700 children signing up for the program. Okay? There's some discrepancy somewhere, and until they're figured out, until I see a number, a real tangible number of children that are playing, there are not over 600 children that signed up for that program this evening. Let's just keep it real. So, until something is ironed out that is logical and makes sense, that's why I voted, because there's no way 600 children signed up for that program.
The vote is already been taken.
It could always come back to the table if that's the case, but my thing is, where I see a discrepancy, to me, that's dishonesty. You see what I'm saying? Because I know what the, you know, the calendar says, and everybody's signed up. I see something that you don't even see, and I'm not seeing those numbers. They're not adding up. And there's also other children in that program as well. And what I do not want to see happen is everything being focused just on sports. Whenever there's children that sit around that need extra care, and they need to be entertained as well. That means having science fairs, book fairs, field trips. We need more than basketball on our summer program. So, I want our program, the funding, to be fair for the day and the evening. So, until something makes sense to me, and I'm telling you, I know it's an honest no. It has nothing to do with friendships or nothing like that. It just isn't adding up. It's just not adding up. So, that's the reason why I said no.
But what I see was as they need.
And I'm telling you, when I see the people who signed up, those numbers are not adding up. Right?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you again, Reverend Crable. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any other public comment this evening? Yes, sir. Just state your name and your address, please. Thank you.
My name is Michael Lintap, and I'm a newer resident to Union Town, the city of Union Town, at 198 Morgantown Street. And I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I was kind of like inspired by some of the stuff that you were saying about seeing a lot of potential in Union Town. And I've been seeing, since I've been here for about two years, even a lot of change in that amount of time. And one of the things was, the farmer's market for sure has been awesome and totally, not so, I didn't actually know about it last year, but I saw it the last two weekends. It's very cool. So, definitely whatever needs to be discussed for that. Seems like it's important to get on the agenda and talk about. And something else that I just wanted to mention that I wasn't planning on talking about either. I didn't see the agenda, but for the county hauling stuff, I just want to make sure that you guys maybe check to make sure that there's no duplicate accounts or anything like that. I know for myself, when I first moved here, for five quarters, every quarter, I would get billed two different bills, one that kept going up and up and up, and one that was the actual bill. And every quarter, I would email them, call them, do everything to get ahold of somebody, and they would finally say, "Yes, absolutely. It's taken care of." And it took five quarters of doing that to finally get that, whatever the extra account was, to stop coming to my house. And they told me all along, "Oh, it's okay. Just pay that one bill." So, I just want to make sure that there's nothing like that or that something like that was checked, because if it was missed for me, there's a good chance to be missed for somebody else. And it was also disappointing at the time. Actually, the only other city council meeting that I came to was related to the struggles I was having with that, telling them, "Hey, I want to cancel. Like, this is ridiculous. After three quarters, I want to cancel my trash." And they said, "You can't cancel your trash in the city of Union Town. There's no other business." And they said, you can't cancel your trash in the city of Union Town. There's no other business, there's no other o- option, and you have to have trash. So I was like, okay, but if this happens next quarter, um, that I need to bring it up to somebody, and that was finally when they took it off. So just, I would just say, make sure that that, that four hundred thousand dollars sounds crazy, but my bill was getting up there, and it, I was paying my bill the whole time, so just something to make sure of.
So just to add to Mr. Mc, Mr. Mc, yeah, you know, it's a great point that you brought up there with the duplicates on, on the list. And that was something that was addressed at that meeting. Um, uh, it was a concern of, uh, of Councilman Winfrey's, I believe. Um, and Mayor, if I'm, if I'm wrong, please correct me on that. Uh, and, and that was something that, in looking through the list and seeing who's on there and running into people that you know, uh, you, you recognize the names, so we found, we have found deceased, uh, individuals, duplicate accounts. And those are, that, that was, uh, that was a topic that, that was, that we're addressing with county hall. Yes, I know, a great point, um, and, you know, and I think once that list, we provided a list, and, and then we started looking down through that in the course of that meeting, it was really apparent of, of who that was. I mean, there, there's less than ten thousand people in the city of Union Town. We all know each other, we all run into each other. We're going to see each other someday. Uh, so when you see these names on there, um, you know, um, and also, at the same time, it, I'd like to mention that that list is not public either, unfortunately for most of the people that are on that list. Or fortunately, I should say, unfortunately for us, I'm sorry. Yeah. Thank you, though, sir. Thank you. What a nice comment to hear from somebody that's been in the town, uh, Mr. Price as well. You know, Union Town, we're not unique. We're not unique in the issues that we have. We have the same issues as everybody else, but it's the people in Union Town that make the difference. You know, and it's really nice to see, uh, people that are new that also recognize that, because I think the people that you're here in Union Town, you've lived thirty-plus years in Union Town, and you lose sight of that. And it's really, it's refreshing, it's nice to have people come back in town that have been gone for a while and bringing, uh, ideas and, and support. You know, and it's just really refreshing to see that, so, you know, I'd like to thank, uh, you know, I'd like to thank you for the comment. Thank you for moving back in as well. So there's a, there's a few people in the audience that, that have come back and they've stepped up, and that's what it takes. At the same time, we're not always going to agree on the things that we want done. And, you know, to touch base on the farmers market, you know, this is something that, you know, I mean, I, my business before getting involved with the city or getting involved with, with the county was the bar business. I have, I had, I had nightclubs, I've had bars, you know, so being in the alcohol business, you know, for me, and this is a personal thing, to, for me, whenever you say family-friendly, it doesn't involve alcohol with, with children. You know, in that setting, whatever anybody wants to do in their personal lives at home, and they want to get together and have parties, that, that's on them, and that can be controlled. But in a public setting, and I agree with the point that others have, and I do, but the problem that I have is that the timing, and I don't feel that alcohol should be a part of that. I do think that we should create ordinance and create designated areas and designated times that where we can do those. And I do think, and I believe once the trouble gets going on, that there could be something in the evenings for the trial that could happen with that. You know, I'm interested in talking more about it, but I do feel very strongly with, with, with how I feel. And I know members of council feel the same way, and, you know, under different circumstances, that opinion evolves and things change. So, you know, we're going to work together on trying to create something that will be best.
Right, I understand everyone may have, um, differing disagreements and views and opinions, but I'm asking to allow us to at least have discourse and then build on it. So that we can, um, because it doesn't just affect, affects a lot of people. If you can imagine, um, managing this market, the vendors, the consumers, that there's a huge ripple effect. And so any more discourse, I understand, any more we can try and talk, um, just requests. So if we go through the process and we do not vote, can I be able to comment on it?
And to get back.
Understanding, understanding that we're making this group.
Yeah, and to go back to mention like the, the Italian Festival, tho- those are all events that are, that request permission to do those or to do that kind of service, and, and that's granted. So, you know, I think, um, outside of the area and the issues that I personally have with, with the area location and, and, and the details of it, if we can come together as council and with our solicitor and to create something that works best with everybody that, along with the, the Parks and Rec Board, along with participation from the public, but also with the individuals that sit at this table that they feel comfortable with. You know, it, I, I don't think many people understand until you actually, you can say you understand until you actually sit here and, and you, you're posed with these questions and these decisions. And, um, you know, for some, that might be difficult. Um, for me, that was a very easy decision on that. And, and when I say that, like, you know, still looking for ways that we can work together and we can, we can evolve and we can change them. And there is, there is common.
But, um, what is our path? Or are we able to get it to the agenda?
So your, your first path would be is that garner support from the council person of that department. That is the, now, you, can you go around that? Yes. But that presents a clear path a- and to getting it adopted. And, you know, for me too, like, I have to respect the, the, you know, um, I have to spec, respect Councilwoman Brown's opinion for that as well. I share the same opinion as well.
It's hard for us to know whatever the opinions are, because they're not going to vote. That, that's what we're asking.
So the, the opinion is now.
And the public is going to know.
So the opinion is now is that we're going to hold the, the, with the ordinance.
Sure, absolutely, yes.
And that me, for me to move forward with it first, it's going to have to come from the, the council persons. And after that, like, we're going to have to sit down and have clear direction from the solicitor that is going to, because I don't, you know, we shouldn't be doing away with ordinances. We should be cleaning out and making them work better for us in the year twenty twenty-four. You know, um, I don't, I, I just, you know, I, I wish we could talk about it more frankly and not, in the, on camera in the public.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like just do what you.
I'd love to talk.
Yeah, absolutely. Why not? Because there's strong language, there's strong conversation what comes into that, and, and I don't think that the time and place is for council meeting. So the proper time and place for that, you know, i- in this discussion, and, you know, uh, if you guys want to bring in your department or whatever you guys want to do there, but when it comes to the table, that's going to be up to the individuals at the table, mainly the person from that department. And you're asking somebody also to, you know, craft an ordinance that they don't feel, that they don't support. You know, and so, but like I said, there is common ground, and there is, there is a path where we can meet. I, I don't know if it is in the exact same circumstances that you guys want, or if it's going to be in the time that you want. That I, that I don't have an answer for, because ordinances take time to create. You have to advertise now. This would be something that you would have to advertise, or we vote and take some.
So the, to do an ordinance that would have been prior ordinance, it would go through the process where it would be introduced and then subsequently voted.
So you're sixty days away if we did it.
But we can make an exception to the ordinance.
So the other, the other, your current ordinance provides for council to approve an exception for a specific event. Um, so your, your other option is to vote on a specific exception.
If it's brought up, if it's, if it's, if it's presented and seconded.
Exactly. It has to go through the normal process to get on the agenda, but that would be your, your other option, other than amending the current ordinance.
Yeah, sure. Go to the, uh, question, Jim. Just state your name, your name, please. Thank you.
My name's Jim Engel. I live at nine Barton Mill, and, uh, I too hadn't, hadn't planned on, on talking about this here, uh, tonight, but I, um, just, just want to put this in, in a little bit of perspective for, uh, what I'm hearing is that, the biggest, the biggest thing that I, that I've seen, um, so I've lived a lot of different places, and farmers markets have always been a good, uh, you know, social, um, social glue in some ways. I mean, a lot, you go down there and, like, I've spent about an hour down there both weeks, just because there are a lot of parishioners there, um, a lot of folks from the community, um, kids from our youth program, and, uh, talking to them all. And I'm sure you guys have all seen, you know, I mean, the numbers have tripled or quadrupled. I mean, it's, it's, it's astounding. Like, I walked up over that rise and saw, uh, that parking lot full and people, you know, buying healthy vegetables and stuff and hanging out and talking, and I was, this is what our town could be. And, um, I've, I've, I've seen, our, our church has a policy with, uh, uh, no alcohol with, uh, with, uh, events on-site. Um, and that's because we have people that are in recovery and people that, that don't. We still serve little glasses of wine every Sunday morning. Um, we, we have options for it, but we also serve little glasses of wine. Um, I have yet to see anybody, uh, drunk off of communion wine, and I have yet to see anybody drunk at the farmers market, or even moderately impaired. So, I mean, you know, and it's nine o'clock in the morning, you know, people aren't going down there to drink. So it's, it's just a weird situation for me, and I mean, I think that, uh, the biggest thing for me would be to, to have a, a conversation, a discussion, and, um, you know, clear, clear instructions going forward. So that's, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Jim.
My question is, what I want everybody to understand is, I just found out about what was going on, I was just told about it. But my thing is to everyone, if I can say there's an ordinance that I don't like, can you give me a special, uh, excuse or give me a reason, you know, whatever? So what if someone comes to us that wants to have a party at Bailey Park, and they come to council and says the same exact thing you're saying, we want a special allowance to raise that ordinance, so they can have alcohol at their birthday parties and do whatever, you, you understand what I'm saying? The, the rules are there for a reason, and like I said, what does the ordinance say? The ordinance says you can't.
What, what I'm saying, I, I need more than three minutes to, um, describe the impacts of this.
No, I understand what you're saying completely. Trust me, I understand what you're saying.
I could understand not approving that.
I can understand what you're saying, but what I.
They're just different.
No, I don't feel they're different, because rules are rules.
Well, there's no consumption in the market. The, the state has a one-ounce pour taste, and there is no open container in the market. And you can take away the taste, it's all closed bottled container sales. There's no consumption. So that, I, I need more time to explain.
No, I know what you're saying, but, and my thing is, maybe the venue change, I have an issue, here's my issue, everybody talking about their issue. I'm going to talk about my issue. We're in a, a town where addictions run rampant, okay? I know for a fact myself that when I pick up off of these parks, when I clean them myself. So to promote alcohol usage that early in the morning, I feel it's not a good book. That's just one. The main thing is, though, if we go and say, we'll give people okay to change the ordinance around if they don't like it, and they get special, you know, concessions, and if we do it for one, we have to do it for all, and that's just not going to happen. That's just going to open up a whole bunch of nonsense that I'm not willing to deal with, so.
I'm asking, could I talk to you? I'm, I'm, I'll stay after. Could I, um, and obviously, we just get bored from here, I, I have a lot of input on this, um, it's been so involved in the market, so I'd like to try to elaborate more on this, and if you'd be willing to let me talk with you after.
Yeah, you know, I'll, I, I always told you I'm available. You, you, you went to the mayor and about it, you didn't come to me about it. So, you know, we're just now getting conversated about it. You see what I'm saying? So my door has always been open to you, but we have to figure something out. But to sit there and promote alcohol from nine AM to twelve, that's just like, I don't see how big of an impact that's going to make on anybody anyway, first of all. That's, you know, you have so many other good things going on at the market. You have a lot, you have to think of your community as a whole, not because of one vendor or two vendors who you might have to say no to. Because you, you represent a whole entire community. You see, and there's a lot of, so we can, we'll find common ground, I'm pretty sure we can. But I'm not for it, I just, just because where it's at, just because of the location.
Yeah, we have, there's a lot.
And you can't guarantee that someone's not going to open up and go and drink. You can't guarantee that, because you're busy watching it, you know.
We have a lot of education to provide on this topic, so I don't know when the community is, what council, would you all be willing to say after? Let's elaborate on this, or, um, will we be able to have a vote where other members of the community may be able to talk about it?
I think, I, I, I think the first thing that, I mean, we can sit here and talk about it. It's not going to do anything through your folks for this month.
Right, absolutely.
Let's me and you talk, and let's see what we can, let's just, let's just try to figure something out.
That's initially.
Tell them that's my stance, and, and it is what it is, I think.
I would like the, the person to you to bring it to council.
Okay.
Okay, you have the, you have the conversation.
Okay, all right, we'll do it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kelly.
Thank you all.
And thank you for what you are doing for the farmers market. You're doing excellent job.
Oh, we're doing a great job.
The farmers market is going great. So, but don't let this be discouraging. This is not the end. We're, we're going to find a way to work through this. Somewhere where we feel more comfortable at all.
And I know you want to please everybody, and I get it, like, like Jared was saying, once you get in the seats, it's kind of hard, because you're not going to be able to please everybody. So don't take it too, you know, too close to your heart, don't, you know, you're going to have to stand up sometimes. But you do amazing job. I really, what you do down there is amazing. I love the board, because they're all, you have it together. So, but every once in a while, you're going to hear a no, and, but we'll come to some common ground, try to figure it out. And I'm sure the community still will be there, because it's the absolute, your event is wonderful, so.
Yes.
I'm pretty sure it will still show up, you know, so keep launching going, we'll talk.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening?
One thing I wanted to add, and I forgot to. Um, with the construction of the trail, I know that if you are standing on the trail looking down Beeson, it looks like that the center of Beeson is the trail, just because they are the same color asphalt. The center of Beeson is not the trail. Do not ride your bicycles and walk down the center of Beeson. Until there is designation, please use the sidewalks. I have seen a handful of people just ride their bike straight down the center of Beeson.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John. Any other public comment this evening? If not, that's all I have, Mr. Wick.
A be resolved by the city council of the city of Union Town to adjourn, um, this meeting to meet Wednesday, July the tenth, twenty twenty-four, at five o'clock. Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes. Thank you all for attending.